Jay, whenever you're ready. Thank you. Here we are. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the City of Bettendorf City Council Meeting. Today is Tuesday, December 6th, 2022 at 7 o'clock PM. Today, we are joined by Rock Island Mayor Mike Tomes, who purchased a Mayor for the Day offering at a local auction for Rivermount Collegiate. So he's going to help us with our meeting since we didn't have him climbing in police cars and fire trucks and over some of our stuff at Public Works. Your Honor, if you would, please do the honors.
I will.
Could we have a roll call, please?
Adamson?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Connors?
Here.
Nauman?
Here.
Sexer?
Here.
Baden?
Here.
Webster?
Here.
All right, could we stand for the Pledge Legions?
Our Pledge Legions to the Pride of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And stand for the invocation. You want to introduce who's doing that?
I certainly do. We will now have the invocation given by Bettendorf Police and Fire Chaplain and Pastor of Ashberry United Methodist Church, Pastor Tom Carver.
Thank you. Mayor for the Day, that's...
Yes.
So just a word...
It's been a long day, Pastor Tom. Long day.
Normally, he has kids, he says, do this. I think I was probably the youngest one he's had.
You go climb on the fire trucks, that's probably the highlight.
That's it.
But so, Rivermount Collegiate, actually, the faith leaders of Bettendorf, they've been gathering for a number of years, and Mayor Gallagher meets with us on a regular basis. So we greatly appreciate that. And we'll be meeting at Rivermount this week.
Very good.
So we'd very graciously hosted to have a chance for us to meet in the mansion. But part of our objective is people of faith who are building trusting relationships in order to solve problems and improve our community. So it's one of the things that we're celebrating various holidays at this time, but there's a group of us that believe our faith should unite us across different faith traditions or different peoples. And that certainly includes across rivers, too. So Rock Island is a part of that, our community. So we're glad you're here.
Thank you. Glad to be here.
Gracious God, we do look to you. When many of us celebrate, but we also recognize there's a universal need for your hope, your love, your joy, and your peace. We pray that as a community, we would work for all of those here. We pray for our mayor, for our leaders, for our community here and across the river, that together we all might be people who seek to care for one another and seek your hope, your love, your joy, and your peace. We pray in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Tom. We'll see you Thursday at the mansion. All right, we've got a couple of things to do today. We're going to do a recognition here in a minute. But first, I've got an add-on proclamation. And then we've got some folks with us to celebrate some of the great things that we were able to accomplish at the Festival of Trees Parade.
All right. I do have a proclamation from the Office of the Mayor of the City of Bettendorf this evening in light of our friend from Rock Island joining us. Whereas this is the 11th year of the Mayor for the Day being offered as a charity auction item. And whereas the winning bidder is typically a child who can enjoy seeing police cars, fire trucks, or Public Works equipment. And whereas this year's bidder is definitely a child at heart who is really here tonight to pepper our department heads with questions about a well-run city. And whereas our mayor for the day is a very generous philanthropist, having unfortunately befriended a popular auctioneer, Mr. Decker Plain, many years ago, who pressures our mayor for the day into supporting worthy causes at events all over town. There's a good cello story that you could be told later this evening if you join us. Whereas our mayor for the day is an example of a collaborative leader who partners to work on a myriad of issues, building relationships to solve regional issues that affect all of us so that we can all thrive together. And whereas our mayor for the day serves our community on many local charitable boards and government commissions and is actually a local mayor. Now therefore, I, Robert Gallagher, the Mayor of the City of Bettendorf, Iowa, have the distinct honor and privilege to welcome my friend, today's mayor for the day, Rock Island Mayor, Mike Tomes.
Thank you. You know, real quick, while we got it a little bit, I know you've got a little goody bag, but I want to make sure you have something.
Oh, no, you didn't.
So we've got some cufflinks made with the Rock Island logo on it for him. They're long stories. Those have been around. I heard some stories. Virgil, maybe, name of it. And so I want to make sure that you have some to wear this, whatever occasion you want. And your city administrator has a pair also, so...
You know, based upon the amount of money he gets you to spend at these auctions.
So I wanted to make sure you got some.
Can we get a bulletproof vest in the middle?
Oh, and welcome to Bettendorf. There's your swag bag.
Little swag. I love your swag. You guys have some great, wonderful things. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir.
But I just, not that I, while I got to stage.
Yeah, please.
But I want to say, once again, he was, it was a great proclamation. And, but your city staff, your elected officials, have done a wonderful job in the Quad Cities, and it's a wonder, it's wonderful to work together. You know, the Quad Cities and all the cities in around have done such a great job working together on different projects, collaboration in different areas. And it is a pleasure to, for me to be a mayor of one of the cities that works so well together. And so thank you very much for your philanthropy and his work. But really, we all know that the work gets done in these other chairs over here, more than over here.
Thank you very much.
But I just wanted to be able to say publicly, thank you very much for everything that everybody here does. It's really appreciated in, throughout the Quad Cities to make this a much better place for people to live, enjoy, be safe throughout the Quad City region area. We need to speak, think, and speak regionally at many times. So...
You're here. You're here.
Yes.
All right, we do have a recognition. So I'd like to have Joe Adam from our Planning and Zone Commission come up. And Mark, do you want to join Joe?
I'd like to, Mayor. Sorry, I'm about to say you're going to step over.
I don't wait, Dan.
Staff member or, or Ed or Chris, do you want to call? You attend all these meetings, too?
I do.
Joe, thank you. So on behalf of the City of Bettendorf, we would like to recognize and thank Joe Adam for his work on the Bettendorf Planning and Zone Commission. Joe has been with us since 2020.
I forgot to show the date. 2020, 21?
Okay. And we invited Joe to serve and graciously agreed to help us on Planning and Zone. He's got some plans that change his ability to continue to work with us. But on behalf of a grateful city, I wanted to make sure that we had an opportunity to thank you properly. And for that, we have gone to our friends at Glass Glass, like we always do, for a wonderful gift. And this says, "Presented to Joe Adam for his dedicated years of service to the citizens of Bettendorf as a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission." Joe, thank you for your service.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
So I'll give you the box to put her in. Switch it this way. Yep.
You certainly can say anything you want.
I just echo the mayor's comments. We have a very, very well-run city. And thanks to you, Mayor, and Decker and council, and especially the city staff. We have a great thing going here. My wife, Michelle, and I have been here 35 years and have seen so many just fabulous things happening, and even more fabulous things happening thanks to the development team and all of you. So we're just, we'll be back here in the summers and just really look forward to seeing the growth of Bettendorf. So thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you so much.
For you, sir. Thank you.
Give him the cufflinks.
All right, Gene Lake and Matt Elliott are with us, sitting in the back. They're from the Family Museum. Kim Kidwell is going to come up with them. These folks, each and every year, do an awesome job preparing us for our Festival of Trees Parade. They take, make great things out of next to nothing. They put together all kinds of different cars and things that we use in our parade. And this is a banner year. You guys did an awesome job with the pink Cadillac. In fact, we have a lot of awards here thanks to your hard work and the folks who attended and did the parade with us. Best in parade. When's the last one you won that?
Andy, do we have pictures?
Yeah, we'll show those in a second.
Most holiday cheer.
I think we did that in the box.
That balloon handlers' costumes. There's no way we would have been best in show. There's no way we would have had as much fun as we did with your pink Cadillac. Excellent work. Thank you very much. Now, let's take a look at the pictures on your screen. All right, how you doing? How you doing?
Yeah. Out of a golf cart.
Very welcome.
Love healing. I just want to thank Gene and Matt. They're part of our exhibit staff at the Family Museum. And every year when we get the balloon assignment, it's sort of the creative juices start flowing. And I have absolutely nothing to do with it, other than just let Michelle know what we're doing. But Gene and Matt just construct, I mean, Gene brings things in that she's had in her basement. I just go back there every day. Wow, okay. And people can't believe that there's actually a golf cart under there. And even, I think, the golf cart company came on accident for something and was like, that's our golf cart. Well, we'll put it back together. Don't worry about it. So it just really brings a lot of festivity to the parade. And I know they work really, really hard on it and take a lot of time out, so we appreciate it.
You're here.
Yeah, should we get him a picture, please?
And they also do...
Yeah, make them talk, too. They love that.
They also do the Halloween.
Kim, get in here.
I didn't do anything.
Kim, hold the ribbon.
I just put on costumes somebody told me to put on.
I mean, I, yeah, I...
Thank you.
Nice job.
Thanks. See you guys. Appreciate you guys.
Yeah, Matt, we're going to have to make, have you make a trophy case for us now.
And put it on the next float.
Yeah, come on, Ken.
All right. We're going to have a quick presentation given by our Scott County Board of Supervisors Chairman of the Board, Ken Beck. Going to update us a little bit on a very important topic, the medic ambulance and our next steps in that regard. Ken, welcome. We're glad you're here.
Do you want me to stay in here?
No, have a seat. Yeah, make yourself at home.
Well, thank you so much and good evening and greetings from the Board of Supervisors. And I apologize for running in at the last minute, but I was at the CO2 Pipeline hearing, our presentation down there, and felt it necessary to get the county's comments and concerns in front of them once again, even though we did it previously. But tonight, and your second, where I'm working my way down river. Last night, I spoke to the City of Leclerc's council tonight. And then tomorrow, be talking to the City of Davenport to kind of give them, give you all an update on where the county is in the transition, in transitioning of medics to a county department. But as I did last night, I thought it's as important to tell you a little bit about the history of how we got to where we did. Because I know many of you know it very intimately, but not everybody may know how it all started. The medics was started as a 501(c)(3) organization, a not-for-profit, in 1982 to provide 911 services throughout Scott County, which currently has a population of about 175,000 persons. The current Medic Board of Directors consists of 15 members, 10 of which are from the local medical centers, 2 are from the city of Davenport, 1 from each the city of Leclerc, Bettendorf, Scott County, and the medics organization itself. The county has been providing medics with supplemental funding for quite a few years to cover any operational losses that they occur during the year. Many years, the county has not needed to provide any funding at all, nor have we ever really reached the maximum of $200,000 per year, which really is a testament of how well medics organization is run. But as we all know, the funding and payment streams have altered over the years since, definitely since 1982, and even in the last 5 to 10 years. And the Medic Board of Directors, you know, saw the need to take a look and search for a long-term, sustainable revenue stream and service model. In 2018, the Medic Board began a strategic initiative to evaluate the sustainability of both the current as well as future services of EMS in Scott County. The intent of the Medic Board has always been to keep the current service model, which is to provide comprehensive services throughout Scott County. The Board initially evaluated a 28E agency, which is similar to our Scott Emergency Calling Center and also the Waste Commission of Scott County. After discussions with the Iowa Department of Health and Human Services, which is the new term for DHS, as many of us know it. But in those conversations, they informed us that a intergovernmental agree, or intergovernmental agency such as a 28E agreement would not be eligible for ground emergency transportation grant funding, also known as GEMT, which is important since it can be used to help offset the revenue losses. And the reason that we were given is that because the agency would not be under a single governmental agent or governmental unit, that's why the intergovernmental agreement could not be used in this case. So in October, the Medic Board unanimously approved asking the county to restructure medics into a Department of Scott County. In addition to just the Medic Boards, Genesis and the Scott County Board of Health also unanimously, it's easy to say that when your mouth is well-waisted.
Probably philanthropist.
That got me tonight.
And now I lose my place here. But they unanimously also became, suggested they become a county agency as well. So, thank you. I already have one back there. I shouldn't have brought that. But so medics becoming a county department will provide enhanced revenue opportunities by the potential GEMT funding, the Iowa Offset Program Revenue Recovery. And although we're not currently looking at this, the legislation, legislators last year, I think it was last year, created Code 422D, which would allow a supplemental levy for just EMS services. But again, that's just potential down, down the road. As a county department, medics will not only have new revenue opportunities, but will also reduce expenses by combining the, well, basically not needing to have all the day-to-day services that the county currently is providing in-house. So those would be folded into the current departments that we have. Important one is improving the employee benefits by coming on to the county wage scales, which are typical of step increases every year, along with a COLA increase. One big factor I had not really considered is sales tax. They pay sales tax on what they purchase. And with, you well know how much vehicles cost, there's a chunk that goes with that. And also, no state or federal taxes for the fuel, which they use lots of. So in addition to the operational efficiencies, we believe that becoming a department will improve the employee recruitment as well as the employee retentions by placing the employees, as I mentioned before, on the county pay scale, increasing the benefits through enrollment with the Iowa Public Employment Retirement System, as known as IPERS. So the Board of Supervisors directed the staff to review the process of transforming medic into the county department sometime in fiscal 2024. Because of the, medics' year is January to January, ours is June to July, basically. Those are the dates that we'd be looking at. We would hope that possibly as early as July, but with the idea that that might be a little quick. But it's, hopefully will be either July or January of 2024. The journey to transform medics into a county department is a work in progress. And today, I'm here to update you on where we are in that progress, which includes, we're in the process of interviewing and retaining a business consultant to assist the county through the transition. We're creating a job description and also setting a salary range for the department head who will oversee the day-to-day operations and will report to Mahesh Sharma, who's our county administrator. Again, that person that we hired will also be involved in this transition process. And in the future, we are going to retain legal counsel, experience with mergers and acquisitions. While we see this transformation as a positive means to continue providing high-level, quality services to all residents of Scott County, it is also a means to enhance those services moving into the future. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today and updating you on this transition. And I know that many of you are involved in this quite often, but I'll be happy to come back at any future date to update everybody else as we hit major milestones along the way. And I will, if you have questions, I'll attempt to answer them. If not, I'll ask Decker, too.
Thank you, Ken. I appreciate it. Thanks for the update. And again, our partnership with the county remains steadfast and strong. We're doing the right thing here, and we really appreciate the county doing this and stepping up to do it. We'll be here to partner with you. Questions? Jerry?
Thank you.
Councilmember Sexer, now we're at a Tuesday night meeting. I'm sorry. Try to be more formal.
Will medic be able to donate their assets to the county?
That's part of what the business consultant and legal team will determine. But it's our understanding that there will be a transfer of assets from medics to the county. And what the shape that'll take, I'm not at liberty to really say. I'm not that far into it.
I think to be eligible for GEMT, it probably has to be at fair market value. But that's being worked on in the transition and one of the issues that we'll work out.
Other questions for Mr. Beck while he's here? Yes, Councilmember Nauman, please.
Thank you, Honor. Supervisor Beck, do we think that based on what you've looked at, and I know we're in the initial stages, we're all struggling with finances and operational efficiencies. Does this give us, as a community, the best service as well as maybe the best bang for the buck, the operational efficiencies that I think we're inevitably going to have to find? Is this the best deal?
Yeah, that's the, you know, I've said it several different times. You know, there's discussions of Davenport breaking off and doing the service on their own. But we see that the, some of the parts, you know, isn't as good as the whole. If we are able to get, you know, everybody under the same umbrella, I think it will build the best efficiencies and provide the best service for everybody in Scott County. But the services that, you know, should be that they decide to go their own direction, the county will be providing the medics' level of service that you know today through the remainder of the county. And again, as I mentioned, we hope to enhance those services as we move forward. But they are very efficiently run. And I think that this will, becoming part of the county will help overcome some of the issues with retention, recruiting, and also the efficiencies by, you know, not having two accountants, not having two payrolls, not having, we have a shop that can work on vehicles. Now, whether it can work on ambulances, we work on motor graders, we work on big dump trucks. But again, there's that duplicate of service that's going on now that we feel will add to the efficiencies of the operation.
Does this also, and I don't know if the, Decker, this may be more in your realm, but thinking ahead, does this change where we might put future fire stations, where we might dispatch from and so forth? Does that allow us some operational efficiencies, look at this from a, not what is today, but where things might be 15, 20 years and beyond? Is that part, part of the strategy then, or...?
Well, we'd always had those discussions that, that would, that's where this would lead. The ADM model that we have today in the county, as you know, the alternative delivery model, where we have a single paramedic and a volunteer in Buffalo or Bluegrass, Eldridge, and Leclerc. And then the two cities have the bulk of the staffing. Always, we've talked about the, it seems like the smart maneuver then is that we figure out, because the volunteerism is declining, how best could we strategically align new stations in the county that could be assisting in paid fire response as well as house ambulances accordingly so that, that the same planning principles that we apply to, say, fire and how fast we can rapidly deploy from a station, apply to ambulances, and then trying to do flexible deployment at the same time if that can be done. So yes, that's the hope, that that would materialize and move forward as we, as we get this solution solved.
Thank you, Honor.
And I'll just add to that, and discussion happened this morning at our board meeting. You know, this is, this is a team effort. You know, one of the, the concerns is that we hear is that firefighters arrive first. Well, I ask you, where in Scott County wouldn't a firefighter arrive first? And they provide the initial services that are needed. Medic will arrive one level up, or maybe multiple levels, but now they come in. And medic can't provide what a, what a doctor can at the medical center. So it's a, you know, it's a tag-team process by which we get the person stabilized, moved, and to the location where ultimately they need to get critical care.
Councilmember Webster. Senator Webster soon, but Councilmember Webster in front of me tonight.
Thank you, Honor. In the GEMT breakdown, and this could be for either one of you, I don't know, is dispatch go into the cost of service to deliver the service?
I believe it's an eligible expense.
If it is, will you see a problem with the dispatch continuing in a 28E? Will that have to become a county department at some point? Or will that not have to, and it just gets billed to the county somehow?
It's a great question, and one of the transition questions is how does all this play out? And how does it need to be aligned to be eligible? So it, it's, it's an eligible expense, whether in its current format is eligible. I don't think we know the answer to that. But again, that's part of the transition planning we're going to have to work our way through.
Yeah, and I'll add this, considering the fact if Davenport doesn't come into the fold, if they do, I guess I would not see a whole lot of change necessarily. You know, the structure internally will change, but physically, how the calls are handled wouldn't be changed.
Right.
Other questions for Chairman of the Board?
Good questions.
Beck?
None from you, though.
Can you come over to the other side of the river?
There, yeah. No, I'm just joking.
Well, I think we don't have any further questions. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Chairman of the Board, Supervisor Beck.
It's always nice.
Always nice to see you.
It's nice to be with friends and colleagues here in my hometown.
Yes, well, you're welcome back. We appreciate all you do.
Take, take the water if you'd like, Ken. Take, take the water if you'd like, Ken.
All right, we've come to public requests of council. If there's anybody here who wishes to be heard on an item not already on tonight's agenda for a public hearing, now is the time we'd like to hear from you. Anybody here for public requests of council this evening? All right, we'll close public requests. Let's move to our first public hearing. Director of Community Development, Mark Hunt, can you give us a little background on the ordinance amendment you're seeking tonight?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. What we're doing tonight really is just clarifying and updating our parking code to reflect on what we've done in our downtown, adding the public parking lots. At one time, the, the parking waiver for our downtown, we have a 50% parking waiver for our downtown, was, was termed interim, as an interim temporary part of our code. That now should become a permanent part of our code, because we have built the downtown parking lots and we've achieved the design that we want. And so we're just taking that same language, taking the title interim off, making it a permanent part of our code, that is still reviewed by Planning and Zoning Commission and still voted upon by this body, so it's not an automatic waiver. You still have to prove it, if you will. And then we are identifying language for temporary parking uses that may occur in our downtown or anywhere in our city that are less than 30 days in nature. We do give the city administrator the ability to approve those temporary, short-term parking needs that may come up. Silly example, the circus comes to town, needs parking downtown, you may just do that on a temporary status.
Fantastic. Any questions for Mr. Hunt from our city council? Okay, Michelle, did we publish notice of this public hearing?
Yes, we did, Your Honor, and I do have an affidavit publication.
Did we receive any written correspondence with regard to the same?
No, we did not.
All right, let's open the public hearing with regard to the amendments. Mr. Hunt, just explained to us, is there anyone here who wishes to be heard on these proposed amendments? I will close the public hearing and move to the ordinance on first reading. Councilmember Baden, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a first reading of an ordinance amending Title 11, Chapter 13 of the Bentendorf City Code entitled Off-Street Parking and Loading. I move approval of the ordinance at the first reading.
Second. Any discussion on this ordinance amendment? Seeing none, Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Baden?
Aye.
Webster?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Connors?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Sexer?
Aye.
We have unanimously passed your requested changes. Mr. Hunt, thank you for your work. We move to another ordinance on first reading. Councilmember Connors, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have the first reading of an ordinance amending Bentendorf City Code Section 6-1-322, Paren A, Paren 2, Vehicles Entering Stop Intersection by Adding a Stop Sign Intersection on Heights Court, Middle Road, at Lincoln Road. I move approval of the ordinance at its first reading.
Second. Any discussion here? We kind of figured this would be coming. Okay, Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Baden?
Aye.
Webster?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Connors?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Sexer?
Aye.
Adding cleanup on our first round of the ordinance is, is Councilmember Brown, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have the first reading, reading of an ordinance amending Bentendorf City Code Section 6-1-142, Parking Restrictions, Emergency Snow Removal, Cul-de-sacs by Adding No Parking During Certain Times for Snow Removal at the 15th Street and 18th Street, Have The Parking Lots. I move approval of this ordinance at its first reading.
Second. Any discussion on this ordinance? Michelle, please, call the roll.
Baden?
Aye.
Webster?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Connors?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Sexer?
Aye.
Councilmember Adamson's got a second reading, and it's a little special, Councilmember Adamson. Can you handle this for us, please?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Staff is recommending waiving the third reading of this ordinance, and make a motion to waive the third reading.
Second. Okay, Michelle, can you please call the roll on waiver of the third reading of this ordinance?
Baden?
Aye.
Webster?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Connors?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Sexer?
Aye.
All right, we have waived the third reading. Councilmember Adamson, please present our second and last reading, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a second and final reading of an ordinance amending Bentendorf City Code Section 6-1-285, Speed Restrictions by Reducing the Speed Limit to 40 Miles Per Hour on 53rd Avenue from the West City Limits to 400 Feet West of Middle Road. I move approval of the ordinance at its final reading.
Second. Any discussion here on our second and final? Councilmember Sexer, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Do we expect to have significant enforcement after appropriate notice?
Yes.
You know, because I know that there's been some public complaints with speed up there.
I think what we're going to do is we'll do a public, you know, social media and get, get the word out, probably have some electronic signage, making people aware of it, and when we start enforcement efforts up there, probably have a little bit of leniency just to educate and make people aware, and then at some point, I think within a few months, it'll, we'll be enforcing it at the 40 mile an hour.
All right. Yep, Michelle, would you please call the roll?
Baden?
Aye.
Webster?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Connors?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Sexer?
Aye.
Fantastic. That has also been unanimously passed. Mr. Plain, last night we talked about this resolution number 13, that he's been added to the agenda relative to publishing notice for the council vacancy and a request for applications for resumes, resumes for a potential appointment. We talked about timeframes. Do you have something to share with us, sir?
Thank you, Your Honor. After last night's discussion, Chris and I had the chance to visit this morning, and we are recommending that we extend the deadline for the application slash resume one week to January 13th. So that roughly gives us a month from the next meeting, which is where we officially publish the notice of that, even though we will be putting notices out for the vacancy. And then we have suggested that you have two potential dates to have the candidates make a presentation. We'd recommend January 24th, which is a Tuesday night, we would do a special meeting for the candidates to come and make a presentation to the council. We would likely have a questionnaire that we are developing sent out for them to bring back, along with their resume or their presentation. And the council would have the option, if they so chose, to make a decision that night, or we've listed in the resolution that you could delay a week for that decision and come back on 31st of January and make, make the decision there. So we've given you two variables, if you will. You could make that decision on the 24th, you could make the decision on the 31st. And if you recall from last night, and Chris will help me if I'm wrong, but the petition opportunity is 14 days either from the date of the hearing or of the appointment, whichever is the later. So if you chose on the 24th, it would be 14 days.
It's 14 from the notice, the publication of the notice, the notice for the meeting at which the appointment will take place.
Correct, I'm sorry, thank you.
So it's, it's not this notice.
Correct.
That is being, that's the subject of this resolution. It would be the, the notice of, that's when it's published, when it's published for the meeting at which the appointment would take place, or 14 days from the appointment itself.
So the latest would be January 24th or 31st? Correct.
That's right.
That's right.
It's a little technical, this, this whole situation is, is technical, but this gives you the opportunity to, to deliberate and to hear from the potential applicants.
And again, the logic that we were placing on this was the opportunity for a appointment or appointee to be able to be here and in place for the budget, which will start on February 6th, with our introductory recommendation on the budget, and then our work session on February 11th. That's the reason that we were trying to stay under that, that timeframe. So that's the logic.
All right. Any questions for Decker before we talk about our resolution? All right, let's move our resolution. Oh, yes, Councilmember Webster.
I just want to make sure I can participate and vote in this, is that correct?
That, that is correct. For, for this, for this action, you, you can participate, in my opinion, and there's no conflict of interest in this, for you to participate in this action.
Thank you.
We're not going to consider Brenda. I'm kidding, if she's interested, we will.
I don't think you'd be able to handle her.
That may be true, too. All right, Councilmember Nauman, help me out.
Thank you, Your Honor. I do have a resolution directing staff to publish notice of council vacancy and request applications and resumes for potential appointment. I do move approval of the resolution.
Second. We had some discussion last night. Any discussion this evening? Councilmember Connors?
I'd just like to make a statement, Your Honor, that I'm going to vote negative on this resolution. I believe that every resident of the city of Bentendorf has, should have the right and the opportunity to vote for who's going to represent them, including those that live out on the 5th Ward. I think it's the fair and equitable way to choose representation. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Councilmember Webster?
I only want to have the discussion, so, since I was not here last night. I actually had an opportunity to talk with a similar councilperson in Iowa that had the same situation, and I think that this is the right way to move, because I don't think the 5th Ward should miss out on having somebody here for budget. And that person will be up for election, and/or somebody can gather the signatures, which isn't that many, if they felt it was a wrong decision by the council. But I really think it's important that somebody's here to represent them for the budget, and that's why I will be voting in the positive on this, and the citizens then, at that point in time, can still make up their mind, because they can, A, get signatures, or B, the person will be up for election in November. So.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilmember Baden?
Could we have Chris just bring up the timeline if we were to have an election, how far that would be past budget?
Because I believe, I believe it's March, yeah.
March 7th.
Yeah. I think that's an important factor in this appointment, rather than in the election. It's to have those people, have that person on board.
Any further discussion? Okay. Michelle, please, call the roll.
Baden?
Aye.
Webster?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Connors?
Nay.
Nauman?
Aye.
Sexer?
Aye.
All right. That resolution passes six to one. If we look at our consent agenda, now's the time to approve the same, if anybody would like to make that motion.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion on any particular item on consent from any council member at this time? Okay, Michelle, please, call the roll.
Baden?
Aye.
Webster?
Aye.
Adamson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Connors?
Aye.
Nauman?
Aye.
Sexer?
Aye.
Fantastic. We have passed our consent agenda. Just a quick note, excellent job by the family museum for their event this weekend, very cool. Thank you very much. Excellent job by our police department and the folks in the fire department, all the stuff they helped, not only there with the fire department, but also with Tis the Season, excellent job, sir, as always. You do a wonderful job. Bang up. Thank you very much for everybody who participated. Very thankful and blessed to have such great opportunities for our citizens. On that note, I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
So moved.
Second. We stand adjourned. Good work, people. Thank you all for being here. Thanks for the indulgence to have a little-